Good evening. This is a joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee on October 29th at 7:00 PM. In accordance with the Governor's order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Chapter 30A, Section 20 relating to the 2020 COVID-19 outbreak emergency, the October 29th meeting, public meeting of the Board of Selectmen, the Finance Committee, so we're physically close to the public to avoid group congregation. However, to view this meeting in progress, please go to facebook.com/lakecam. You do not need a Facebook account to view this meeting. This meeting will be recorded and available to review at a later date at www.lakecam.tv backslash. As a matter of fact, my name is Rich LeCameron, the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen. Please permit me to confirm all the members, staff and persons anticipated on the agenda. The members of the board are Leah Fabian.
Here I am.
There you are. Brian Day.
I'm here.
And we have Todd Hassett, who's our town accountant.
Good evening.
George, if you can call the meeting for the Finance Committee to order and introduce your members, please.
You got it. It's 7:02. I'm calling the Finance Committee meeting to order. Present with us today is Darren Beal.
Here.
Brian Day.
I'm here.
Oh, my God. I'm so sorry, Brian. I've done this to you so many times. I am so sorry. Adam Lynch.
Here.
Old habits die hard. Larry Costin.
I'm here.
Great. And that is it for us.
Okay, George, thank you. This is an open meeting of the Lakeville Board of Selectmen and Lakeville Finance Committee is being conducted remotely consistent with the Governor Baker's order of March 12, 2020, due to the state, current state of the emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of COVID-19. In order to mitigate the transmission of COVID-19 virus, we have an advisor directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings as such. The Governor's order suspends the requirement for the Open Meeting Law to have all meetings at public accessible physical location, where there are all members of the public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which you find posted with the attendant material for this meeting allows the public bodies to meet entirely remotely, so as long as reasonably access is affordable to the public and go along with the deliberations of the meeting. I thought I had that memorized by now, you know?
It's a tough one.
Okay, so the Chairman of the Finance Committee and myself, a couple of weeks ago, we had a conversation about that to be able to provide maybe some updates and training to the Finance Committee because, you know, we do have two new members. I know Adam started the week before town meeting and so he was not familiar with what was going on in fairness to him. And then Larry, who's our newest member, just got appointed a couple of months ago, I believe, George.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, so the goal of this meeting was to just kind of give an update as to where we are, you know, as far as the fiscal '21 budget is concerned, at the same time, provide some information about how we get here, how we get there to here and whatever. So please, if anybody has any questions, please interrupt me and ask a question. I also invited Todd, you know, to participate, you know, in this discussion. I think that what we need to do is try to make sure we're all communicating together. And I know Todd will help in any way, or any questions that you may have, provide any data that you may need for the process, so. Anyways, so I sent you a packet, you know, that we're gonna kind of, you know, talk from. And I know that Darren and George are familiar with the first, you know, spreadsheet, which is how we balance our budget. And when I like the federal government, we have to make sure that our revenues matches our expenses. So as we go through the budget process, we look at all these numbers, the revenue projections and all the expenses associated with it, and make sure, you know, that everything's in balance. So just from a high level, you know, I know that we, some of us back in February, we were lucky to get together at that time, but since that time, we have not been able to get together as a group. And, you know, that's been a problem for all of us. It's not just Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen, it's other boards as well. But if you look at that sheet, the first sheet, is that the revenue numbers that we talk about is the, first thing is the tax levy, which is generated, you know, from taxes. And that number is right now, and these are pretty much final numbers at this point, is $23,627,168. Under Proposition 2 and 1/2, we're allowed to go up 2 and 1/2% of that number, and that is $590,679. Now, the new growth number is $451,000, still yet to be certified to the state, but we feel pretty confident that that's the right number. And as you know, we went through the other, we went through the budget process. We were concerned about that number and how, if we were going to meet the revenue projection that we used to put the budget in. And new growth numbers for those new members comes from new construction, from houses, building permits, additions and things like that. So as you probably know or have seen around town, there's been a lot of construction going on, you know, in town. So we initially projected $410,000 and it came in at $451, which is good news. So projections were good. Next, going down, you can see that we have what we call debt exclusions. And debt exclusions are override votes that the townspeople vote for. Most, well, all for projects, pretty much. And the most recent one is the police station. So the police station, you know, went to town meeting and then, of course, it had to be voted by the taxpayers. And that's pretty much the majority of the costs associated with that 927. It includes the police station, the senior center and Betty's Neck, which is the land down on Assawamse Pond. The Free Town Lakeville exclusions are $298,000, which is the high school and the middle school. Those particular debt exclusions were done about just over 20 years ago, and those debt exclusions are about to expire. So, and I think one of them is in 2022, and I think the other one is in 2023. So from the perspective of, you know, looking at long-term debt, the town does not have, you know, a lot of long-term debt at this point in time. But the senior center will be coming off as well. The library will be coming off shortly, along with Betty's Neck. So pretty much the debt exclusions that will be left within the next couple of years are the police station, which is fairly new debt. Okay, anybody got any questions on those numbers?
I would just add for the Finance Committee, Rich, that town meeting recently and the voters approved a new debt exclusion for the construction of reconstruction of Route 79.
Thanks, Todd.
So that, at some point, will be coming on, although it will largely be funded through grants, but the town did have a matching share.
Thanks for bringing that up, Todd.
Sure.
Okay, anybody got any questions on that so far? Okay. Nope, okay. So the next item, which we were all very nervous about, was the cherry sheet estimates. And on your second page there, we got the final, yet to be voted by the House and the Senate, but this is supposedly what they've agreed to do. And so you can see that the Chapter 70 money, which is school money, which is very small in our case, because we have regional school districts, the smart growth reimbursement, which is for the apartment complexes down at the tea station. And as you can see, the projected number was $464,000 and it's down to $361,000, which is about, I think it's about a $104,000 difference. But as you recall, during the budget process, we anticipated that. We anticipated there would be a reduction in that, so that really did not affect, you know, the overall revenue projections, nor did it affect our budget. We are concerned, I am concerned, and I know Todd is concerned about the future of that number, because they seem to, when they look at numbers, to cut back at the state level, those are the first things they look at, you know, to try to cut back. So we've got to keep our eye, you know, on that as well. Okay, next going down, the unrestricted general aid, which is lottery money, is $868,000. We anticipated the same number as fiscal '20, as you can see, which is 868. So once again, the projection that we used was the right number to use. And also, actually, also on top of that, we did project a 10% cut, you know, in state aid money, which didn't happen. So that's, that's good news as well. Going down the list here, you can see that, you know, veterans benefits, they reimburse the town for veterans benefits that they provide, the veterans for services, for could be medical insurance or any services that they need. So that's actually up a little bit.
Rich, it's 75% or do, or is it more than that for reimbursement?
75%. You're right, for any eligible costs.
Okay.
But the reimbursement is, comes in a fiscal year after the town has expended the funds.
Great. Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, the next is the elderly exemptions, that, you know, if you meet certain qualifications for salaries and so forth and so on, then we give them tax benefit and then the state reimburses for that, that we have provided, you know, to the seniors, so. And state-owned land, state-owned land is, is pretty much the taxes that would come from land that's owned by the state or by the cities. As an example, the city of Taunton and the city of Bedford, who have properties for their water plants, you know, in our town, that's what the reimbursement, pretty much, right, Todd?
The, the two city reimbursements, we do carry under what's referred to as payment in lieu of tax.
I'm sorry, thank you.
It's part of the local receipts number just below the state aid.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, so the, the bottom line is, is that we pretty much met our projections that we were going to use for the state aid numbers. So that's the $15,569.92. Okay, anybody got any questions on that? Okay, so the next, I'm going to talk about free cash in a minute. The, the next thing is that our local receipts. We, well, other, other additional, I'm sorry, other additional sources that are available to us to use for town meeting are free cash. And free cash is primarily used for capital items and that we use $501,000 at the annual town meeting for capital items. And then the next item was what you call overlay surplus. Now, the overlay account, we have to set aside as part of the tax levy every year for tax abatements in case somebody files, asks for an abatement, which goes through a process through the Board of Assessors, and the Board of Assessors can decide whether they want to approve that abatement or not. So this year, we set aside 100, I'm sorry, we used $130,000 from prior years for overlay surplus. As far as the stabilization account is concerned, and as far as the debt service stabilization account, we have about $1 million in each one of those accounts. And once again, being conservative in our, in our budget, in our revenue projections, we didn't use any of that money. So 100% of that money is still available. And I don't know, I don't have those exact numbers, Todd. I don't know if you'll make some difference, but.
The stabilization account is at about $1,250,000 and the debt service capital stabilization is at $1,127,000 and change.
So none of that money has been used for any of the budget for this year, which is a good thing to do, because we're trying to be as conservative as possible for our projections for fiscal '21. We'll talk about fiscal '22, which is something that I think we should be concerned about. Okay, where are we? Any question on that? Okay. Did I miss local receipts? I'm sorry. Am I missing the local receipts here, Todd? What are they, where is that?
Oh, it's just after state aid in the top section, the revenue.
Sorry, I missed that. Okay. So the other piece of the puzzle, which is, which is document number three. We, local receipts primarily consist of motor vehicle excise tax, which is the big part of it, penalties and fees, pilot agreements, which is payment in lieu of taxes of $20,000, and then other fees, which is $775,000, which is primarily things like building permits and licenses and.
Yeah, and the large, the large piece in this area for service fees relates to the ambulance EMS services provided by the fire department.
Right. So the good news is that in fiscal '20, which was last year, which ended on June 30th, we exceeded every local receipt. So we did not have any problems meeting our estimates. And once again, being conservative on our projections, the same thing we did for 2020. And based upon the, where we are right now, we are ahead of our projections for fiscal '21. There may be a few odds and ends. The only one that concerns us, I think, and because we haven't got excise tax billings yet, is the excise tax. It's possible that that could be down a little bit based upon what we projected. But the building, all the building permits and everything is way up. So the revenues from those numbers are way ahead of our projections. The same thing as far as ambulance receipts, those are up, I would say, at least 20%, Todd, right now, somewhere in that area, if I remember the numbers correctly.
Yeah, that, that sounds right, Rich. I think, again, our, our major concern is we're not sure how car sales have been doing in the past year and whether or not that's going to impact us in February, March, when we send the first excise billing out. It has a pretty steep depreciation schedule.
On the other side, though, Todd, we do have a number of new homes that certainly would have cars. So that's, would add to the base, but.
Right.
Okay. All right. So number four, free cash. And maybe you can explain this better than I can, Todd, how the free cash gets calculated.
Well, the free cash, it's sort of a unique term in Massachusetts governments. It's essentially the town's general operating fund equity that's available for, that's unencumbered and available for appropriation. And it, it sort of ebbs and flows based on our budget performance and to what extent town meeting utilizes the equity. So when we exceed the budget on our local revenues, for example, we're able to add back to free cash. If, if we don't expend all of our operating budgets, we, we close out the excess to equity. And as long as our tax collections are strong and we don't have any outlying deficits or other problems, which the state will hold against the certification, then the, it's essentially equity that's available for appropriation by the, by the town meeting.
So the free cash was certified on September 24th and it's $11,574,563, which is, which is a good number, because as you know, we kind of held back on purchasing some capital items, because we were concerned about potential reductions from the state aid. So we're going to talk about that a little later. Okay. We have two enterprise accounts, one for the park department and one for the transfer station. Now, the way this is set up is that an enterprise fund, all the revenues associated with that enterprise, the park fund, and their expenses gets offset from each other. And once again, if there's any monies that are left over from the revenues versus the expenses, then that becomes a surplus. And you can see on page number five, there's a surplus for the park department of $53,292. Okay, now, we're going to have a discussion about the park department, park commission, because they got a problem, you know, for fiscal '21's budget. We knew it was going to happen, because the revenues are just not coming in, because of, there's nothing really, no activities going on the park commission. But we'll, we'll talk about that a little later. So the next one is the transfer station. So the transfer station, pretty much, once again, it's a separate enterprise and this is outside of the town's budget. And basically, the transfer station is, is doing well. You know, it recovered and the, the fees pretty much targeted, you know, came in pretty much as we projected. And so based on that, at the end of June 30th, there's $209,285 in that, they call this retained earnings versus free cash, but it's really the same concept. Okay? Anybody got any questions on this? Okay, so going back to the first sheet, okay? Now, what we do is we put all the budgets together and we went through that process. You know, we start it usually in December. And we have all the department heads and we set guidelines for the department heads to, you know, submit, submit their budgets. And they did that. And then what we do, we jointly with the Finance Committee, we were fortunate enough to anticipate before COVID-19 came on March 12th, that in February, we had three nights of meetings and met the department heads, went through it all. They explained, you know, their increases and so forth and so on. And so then what happens is that, once we do that and we look and we say, okay, can we, you know, can the expenses match the revenue projections that we did? And we did make some cuts, because we were concerned about the state aid numbers, okay? But overall, magically, that we actually have, still have $31,000, $31,149 to spend and we will be spending that at the special town meeting, you know, coming up. So, you know, this is a constant work in progress and a lot of work goes into putting all these budgets together and reviewing the budgets and making changes and so forth. And there's a lot of factors having to do with that budget. So that's kind of a brief overview of what it's all about. And I'm sure that it's, you know, it gets confusing sometimes to understand all this, but as George knows, over time, you get, you know, you get to know what it's all about.
Yeah, the more you look at it, you're right. The more you look at it, the more comfortable you get with it, the more you start hearing about it. You're absolutely right.
So once again, we'll provide any support you guys want. You know, I said Todd's available. Give him a call. You want to go over anything? You know, any reports, any, any budgets or any expenses, you know, we're available to do that. George, what, what I did was I ordered a copy of the Finance Committee handbook, because I couldn't find one in the office. So we'll make sure that every member, I don't know, do you have one, George?
Yeah, I've had one for years now.
Okay, so I'll make sure we get one for everybody that has a copy of the Finance Committee handbook, which explains the whole budget process, how it's, you know, all calculated, what all these terms I just talked about, you know, mean. And it's pretty good. It's not, it's pretty good. So we'll make sure we get a copy of that.
And there's, I don't know if they're still doing them, but there used to be like continuing ed classes that they used to have. I don't know if they're doing them remote right now or not, but if that ever starts up again, we could always get you guys into some of those.
Yeah, if you go to the Massachusetts Town Finance Committee Association, okay, look at the website and see if there's stuff out there that you want to take. And I don't think there's any charges for them that I know of. But, you know, there's plenty of things. They have courses out there, like George says, probably two or three times a year anyways.
Yeah.
Okay. No questions?
They got it all.
No. Okay, the next sheet is the capital plan. Every year, there's a capital plan, a five-year capital plan that's put together. Working with the department heads and looking at their requirements and at their needs, we do have a capital expenditure committee that hadn't been active and we're reactivating that committee. We already have. But because of the timing with the annual town meeting and so forth, there wasn't much time to, you know, spend time with them for them to understand it. We just went over the items that we were going to purchase and so forth and so on, other projects we were going to do. Our plan now is to start the process, just like we will be starting the budget process, hopefully sometime in. uh, hopefully sometime in December-ish, um, so we can, uh, have plenty of time to get both our budgets together and our capital plan together. But this is just a summary of, um, the five-year capital plan. Some of them have already been funded fiscal twenty-one. Um, and we're going to be funding, we're proposing to fund some more, you know, which, you, for those that were on the finance committee uh, for the annual town meeting, that, uh, we held back about five hundred thousand dollars in capital projects. So once again, uh, if you have any questions about any of these items, you're certainly welcome to talk to any of the department heads if if you want to, uh, myself or Todd or any member of the board of selectmen, uh, to ask any questions of, you know, what these items are all about. Okay.
Hey, Rich, can I just have a question that, uh, I I didn't see on here, but it just kind of occurred to me. Whatever, um, what are we doing with OPEB? Are, and even if we're not funding it right now, um, are we looking at that money and just kind of making sure that, you know, we we can still leverage it? I know that, but what's our thoughts around that?
Okay, we're going to be, uh, putting some money in OPEB at the special time meeting, George.
Wow.
We're ahead of you.
Geez, I love it. Love it. All right, let's go.
Well, the the fund has been very, very good because of the stock market. I think we ought to get a little nervous. Hopefully they'll go more conservative, you know, on the stock market, but, uh, we are proposing to put some money into OPEB at this special time.
Okay, great.
Okay. Okay, so anybody got any questions on anything that we just, Darren?
Yeah, I do. Sorry. Um, have we heard anything about the COVID reimbursements?
Okay, Todd.
Uh, yes, I'm the town's designee and and we've been, um, on a, pretty much on a monthly basis submitting, um, our COVID-related expenses to Plymouth County for reimbursement through the Federal Cares Act. Um, in fact, um, just this morning, we sent in another fifty-one thousand of requests for reimbursement. We have, we're awaiting reimbursement for, uh, our share of the regional school districts expense for PPE and some of their technology needs. Um, we've put in for reimbursement for our share of, uh, Old Colony Voc Tech's um, needs, um, for COVID. And, um, in total, we've been allocated, I believe it's just over one point six million dollars of Cares Act funds. Um, and to date, we've probably, um, uh, put in, from off the top of my head, about five or six hundred thousand dollars of requests for reimbursement. Uh, the the funds are available for any expenses related to COVID through December thirtieth of this year. There's some thought that 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 date will be extended and possibly additional funds will be made available, depending on how things play out with the pandemic. But right now, we're all under the, the, um, set of rules that we have to have expended the funds on or before December thirtieth in order to seek reimbursement.
And when will we be reimbursed, you know?
Uh, we've just received one reimbursement to date. Um, it came in about a month ago and it was for an application we filed July eighth. So um, they've, they've added more, excuse me, review staff and they tell us they're ramping up um, and shortening the window for for reimbursement. The the lion's share of what we submitted for the school districts went out, um, in about the third week of September. So I expect in November, we should see, um, quite a bit, um, of reimbursement.
Um, Todd, any word on revenue reimbursement? I keep asking that question, but it keeps being no loss of revenue reimbursement.
Right, yeah. So that's one of the concerns a lot of the communities have is, uh, just to Rich's early earlier point about the park department, for example, in our case, um, with the lost revenue. But to date, the funds are not, none of the funds are eligible to be reimbursed for, um, loss of revenue. There's a lot of push for that and in the likelihood that additional legislation comes through after the first of the calendar year, um, you know, that we may see some relief there, but nothing at this point.
Um, I would, I would think too that based upon, you know, what's happening right now, um, you know, the numbers are up. Uh, just so everybody knows, we went to red today. And that was to be expected, uh, because of the situation. And the reason why we had twenty-seven cases in the last two weeks, okay, we're down to sixteen active cases right now. But the reason why that happened was because we had one cluster of eleven COVID cases. So right away, you know, that's a red flag and of course the state, you know, knows about that. And of course, we now are at red. So, uh, we'll see what happens. But the good news, the good news is we've been doing really, really well. But because of this one cluster of eleven in one location, that's what put us over the, into the red category. But I would think Darren, and I think Todd agrees with this, that where we are right now, we're at November one. And, uh, based upon, you know, what's going on here, uh, things are going in the wrong direction, you know, right now from COVID nineteen. And they're going to have to do something, you know, um, to reimburse, you know, some of the communities. The fire chief, um, was really ahead of the game, that he actually, um, applied for some grant money from the federal government, from FEMA and MEMR, you know, without getting too complicated. Um, and we did get reimbursed, you know, seventy-five percent. And then the Cares Act is reimbursing us the other twenty-five percent. So, uh, he was ahead of the game, not only for the two temporary firefighters that we have hired during this period, but also all the PBE supplies that it's reimbursed besides the stuff from the Cares Act. So, uh, they've really done a nice job, you know, getting money back. So, but, uh, I think we all feel now that, uh, it's going to get worse before it gets better. So.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome, Darren. Okay. Okay, so now, since we're, we're together and, uh, the board of selectmen haven't approved this warrant yet. But I thought it would be appropriate that since both the selectmen and the finance committee are together, that we can talk about this, what's being proposed. So, um, I, I, the document, you know, uh, number four, um, excuse me, number nine, um, article number one, uh, there, I don't know, there may be an additional adjustment to this, Todd?
Yes, yeah.
Um, unpaid bills, um, from a prior year. So we have, um, uh, fourteen thousand dollars in unpaid bills, uh, from prior year that didn't get processed on a time, timely basis. So these have to be paid. This is a normal thing that would happen. Um, we're lucky it's not a lot more than this. I mean, we only have, you know, a few. The one that's a problem, um, which is driving everybody crazy is the unemployment, you know, compensation because, um, so I'd maybe explain this better than I can, but if somebody applies for an unemployment claim and they worked for the town previously, then the town gets charged back a part of that unemployment claim. So if people are unemployed somewhere else and for some reason, let's say they were called firefighter or whatever it happened to be, then we get charged back a percentage of that uh, unemployment claim. Is that right, Todd?
Yeah, so, so unlike a, a corporate employer, um, who pays a pers- ongoing percentage of payroll into the unemployment system, we only pay when we have actual claims and then we reimburse the system. So in good times, as, as, you know, the veteran committee members will, will tell you, we have very modest, uh, expense and very modest budget, uh, needs, uh, for unemployment. Um, when there starts to be layoffs and furloughs because of things like pandemics or economic downturns, the town, uh, if our employees or our part-time employees file, um, we are on the hook for cost reimbursement, uh, dollar for dollar. Um, and what, with respect to this first article, the, the unpaid bill portion, the state system was so overwhelmed, um, in the last several months that the system was not even available for us to download a monthly invoice until mid-August, all the way back to the March claims. So this was an anomaly in addition to the fact that we, we've got a, a large expense of nine thousand dollars, but uh, this represents claims for the last four months of last fiscal year, uh, which were not even available to us. And we're obligated, um, they've, they've given everyone a grace period until mid-December to, uh, pay these back claims.
Okay, anybody got any questions on article one?
Uh, if could, I could just add one more thing, Rich. And so what, what the finance committee is not seeing on the draft that was advanced to you is um, since that was developed, we do have two other invoices related to the transfer station for a total of about twenty-one hundred dollars, and those will be funded from their retained earnings account.
Okay. Okay, article number two is, um, really, um, I'll try to talk about each one so you understand, you know, why these things need to be done. Um, we weren't, we were trying to avoid a town meeting at all. But, you know, when I talk, when I talk about some of these items that we have, along with the capital items, you know, as an example, the, uh, front-end loader at the transfer station, um, is done. The engine blew up. Now, that's a nineteen ninety-five front-end loader, so we knew it was coming. But to put a new engine in that would cost fifty thousand dollars, so we're proposing to buy a used one. We'll talk about that in a minute, but so those are the type of expenses that, you know, it was tough to hold off because we get nervous because we have no idea what the state is going to do, you know, after the first of the year. And, uh, we would have to address this, you know, these items well before June thirtieth. So we thought it was best to do these now, clean this up, to get our twenty-one budget, you know, straightened out and do the capital items that we held, held back on. So article number two, uh, the forty thousand dollar transfer to the, uh, town administrator salary account, and it has to do with the, uh, uh, previous town administrator and a new town administrator, you know, going forward to make sure that we have enough funding, uh, in that salary item. Um, the second thing is that, um, the board selectmen haven't decided yet, but, uh, to go out for a, uh, town administrator search firm, um, is estimated cost to be ten thousand dollars if we decide to do that. The next item is, as you know, um, uh, actually, our treasurer is retiring, uh, tomorrow. Um, and, uh, we have hired an interim, uh, treasurer collector. And as you recall, I know that the, the current treasurer is an elected position, so we're transferring that salary from elected position to the interim treasurer collector contracted services. Okay? Um, the next one is that we, uh, labor union agreement and stipends. Um, if you recall, we budgeted, uh, two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for all contracts, um, which have all been signed and agreed to, which was a good thing for all of us. Um, but we needed additional fifteen thousand dollars to fulfill those obligations of a contract. Um, the IT director, you know, uh, which is currently was an employee, you know, has resigned. And we knew about this months ago that, you know, he was going to be leaving. And so, um, actually through Brian's help, um, we actually have contracted with a a company to provide all our IT services. And so which we're transferring uh, forty thousand dollars from the IT services, um, salary to IT services, contracted services. Okay? Um, thirty-five hundred dollars for elections. Um, we think, we don't know, they say, but we don't believe them, that we're going to get reimbursed, you know, for the postage for early voting. And, uh, Lillian is always very conservative, you know, and making sure that she has enough funding, um, you know, for the election, which is, um, you know, been extensive, quite frankly. Um, so she's requesting, uh, uh, thirty-five hundred dollars to be put in. Uh, we have, uh, twenty-two thousand dollars for, uh, retirements from the fire department. Old Colony, um, our assessment came in sixteen thousand dollars less than what we appropriated at town meeting. And as Todd pointed out, um, we have obligations from the, to the state to be able to provide and pay for, you know, uh, unemployment compensation. So if we don't provide the funding, you know, to do that, then they, they judge charging us fees and interest and so forth. So conservatively, we're trying to put some money in there to make sure that we have enough money to cover any unemployment ca- claims from between July first and June thirtieth of this year. Okay, the next item is the, uh, the, uh, insurance premiums. For some particular reason, uh, we weren't informed that there was a significant increase in the cost of, uh, premiums for, um, a liability and workman's comp and, uh, property liability. And we're shocked. Actually, that number, I believe, Todd's going up to forty-three thousand dollars instead of thirty-eight. Um, so, um, I met with the insurance agent today to review why there was such a big increase. And, uh, there is a number of reasons, um, why. And the primary reason is that the evaluations, uh, were increased substantially, uh, which was not necessarily, what, which was not really necessary to do. And so we're looking at options to review that, those costs, but right now we have an obligation to pay it, um, the way it is. So anybody got any questions on article two?
Nope.
No.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Rich, it's Brian. One quick question?
Sure.
On, on the library, the water irrigation, is that an ongoing fee we should expect in the future to use public water?
No, what happened was, Brian, there was a major problem with the, the, uh, system. And, um, the system, uh, is done remotely tied into the Ted Williams camp. We use their wells, you know, to do that.
Okay.
And, uh, we couldn't get the, the company to come and fix it and the parts associated with it during COVID nineteen. So we had to use the Totten Water Supply during the spring and, uh, June.
Okay, ours.
Not an ongoing, because that's one of the reasons why we changed, because the cost of doing that irrigation through the, uh, Totten Water Supply was very expensive.
Yeah, thanks for the background. My next question was going to be like, why don't we just put in a well? And if it's seven grand a year, we'd be a real quick ROI if that was the case, but it sounds like we already have one.
Yeah, we're all set. We just got a, they, they finally updated, they corrected the system. They still got some testing to do, but it's awesome.
Great.
Anybody else? Okay, the next article is, um, over the years, which these should have been closed out a long time ago. Um, these are projects that, uh, were done by the town. You can see one of them goes back to two thousand and six and thirteen and fourteen and fifteen and these years and and, uh, it adds up to not a significant amount of money, but twenty-two thousand six fifty-two. And of course, Todd, you know, wants, wants to close out all these accounts, so he doesn't have to keep, keep him in the accounting system. So basically what this is, we're going to take this money and use it, you know, towards, um, what we're talking about here. So that's all that's all about.
I just appreciate that Todd is looking under every cushion and every sofa and has found ten cents here, forty-five cents there, so.
Well, it should be done on a annual basis. It should not, you know, you shouldn't have years out there, you know, that are, you know, it's just something that needed to, needs to be done.
So Todd, this is just bookkeeping, these adjustments?
Uh, yes, uh, and we thought it would be best, um, there was a historically, under the previous administration, there was an interest in, in carrying these modest balances forward year after year in the event of, I guess, a repair or some. follow-up expense was needed, but all of these projects or acquisitions have been completed and they've been confirmed with the departments that they don't need the balances. And to Rich's point, you know, I'm advocating that annually we do this and and repurpose anything that we can toward toward new capital needs.
No, I agree with that, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Okay, so now to go on to the capital items of, if you remember, you know, we tried to be ultra-conservative to make sure that we could protect, you know, some revenues in case we had a major problem with the state funding. And so these are the items, if you, there's a couple of items that, you know, addition to, but these are the items that we we held back from a town meeting. So the the first item on there is an unpacked police cruiser for replacement. The second one is the pickup truck, you know, for the fire department. These are all in the capital plan. The next two fire is the permitting software, which we are going to try to get reimbursed from CARES, okay? But if we don't, then we need to be prepared to pay for it. So this permitting software is to make sure that people don't have to come into the fire station to to get a fire permit, burn permit, or whatever it happens to be. This is all going to be done online is with the same system that we currently have that we use for the building department and so forth and so on. So that's what that one's all about. The the fire department, $57,000 for the radios. If those who recall, you know, we spent about $400,000 as far as the police station project to update all of the communications, you know, for both police and fire. We've installed microwaves, you know, on the cell towers and throughout the town, because one of the problems that we experienced is that the reception for the the police and fire by using their radios, they could be out on the road on the especially in the county street area and up in the school area, that the communications wasn't good. So this now is been completed, okay? But one of the things that should have been done at the same time was to replace the the radios for the fire department. And the fire department radios are old, they're analogic versus digital radios, and because of COVID-19 and all the communications that's required, you know, not only within our own departments, but within other departments, you know, in the in the area, especially having to do with providing support, you know, for other communities that these need to be replaced. Now, the plan is, once again, to submit a request to the CARES to get reimbursement for these. But once again, if we don't, then we have to pay for them. So if we don't use this money, it'll just go back, you know, into free cash. Okay? The mower, we need a new mower for the highway department to be used at the park department. The mower that's at the park department is got to be 25 years old, and it's just difficult to fix it, to get new parts and so forth, this was planned to be done in the spring anyways. So we're asking to do it now. The highway department, a used cab and chassis with sander and plow for $80,000. Franklin is just an amazing guy with his staff. They take, you know, since plows aren't out all year round, they have the opportunity to be able to take a used vehicle with chassis and add a plow and a sander to that. And because if you were going to buy something like this probably new, you're probably talking $120,000 to $130,000, so that's what that one's all about. And I mentioned to you the front-end loader at the landfill, and this will be coming from their retained earnings, it will not be coming from free cash. So anybody got any questions on those items?
Rich, two, one question for two items, the permit software and the radios, just to be, make sure everything's clear. I mean, we're essentially putting this aside because we've we've identified these are necessities due to what COVID-19 has done to us and, you know, to our department's needs. But these weren't budgeted items, which obviously that's that's one of the necessities of the CARES reimbursement, like we had no intention of needing these ever. But should they decline our reimbursement request? This essentially is, should we call it like an insurance policy that we put this aside just in case? I mean, I just don't want them to say, oh, like this has been budgeted, so you're you're being declined automatic, this is a hail mary, essentially, we didn't expect for this.
Todd, you want to answer that question?
Yeah, if I may, our intention, if if the group is is in in concept in favor of this is that we are, the fire department is going to move forward prior to town meeting, initiate these purchases, we're going to submit them to Plymouth County by the, before the end of November for reimbursement. We won't know, you know, to the earlier conversation, we may not know for a couple of months whether they'll reimburse it or not, but we will have expended it at a time when we did not have a budget or an appropriation for these purposes, that's what we're trying to do anyway.
Good, that's good, I just want to make sure that by doing this, we don't accidentally have them say, oh, no, you you were budgeting for it. No, no, we weren't, this is this is our hand being forced essentially.
Yep.
Yep. All right, thank you, appreciate it.
Sure.
Okay, going on. Okay, Article number four is to provide $50,000 in funding for the OPEB. I'm sorry, I got the wrong one, excuse me. Oh, I'm sorry, next one is Park. This is definitely our biggest problem, no question about it, you know, as far as the Park Commission is concerned. If the members recall, we took $47,000 of their retained earnings and put it in the fiscal 21, their fiscal 21 budget, okay? So based upon that $47,000 in the revenues to date, I believe, are $16,000, which is nothing, as you can see. So in looking at the budget projection as far as salaries and expenses is concerned, if we don't add $50,000 to that budget, they're going to have to be cutting staff, and we really don't want to do that. So that's what that one's all about.
And if I could just add, after town meeting, we'll be quickly moving forward to setting the tax rate, and if we don't do anything with this budget prior to tax rate setting, it's likely that the Department of Revenue will question our ability to fund the park as originally voted, and it may hold up the setting of our tax rate and mailing of the tax bills. And and in addition, we'll know better in the spring, but it's likely we may need to come back to the Spring Town Meeting for for more support for the park. And as you recall earlier this evening, Rich pointed out, they've got about $53,000 in their retained earnings. So that might be the time in which we need to draw some or all of that as well. It's a major problem, given the lack of revenue.
Can I just add into this part that it was, you know, this has nothing to do with the park commissioners at all, that absolutely was nothing to do with them, it has all to do with COVID-19 and not being able to generate the income that, you know, so I don't want anyone to think that, you know, the park commissioners themselves have been on top of this, working with, you know, Todd and the budget, and it's just that, and that's why I keep bringing up, you know, I sort of represent the parks, and that's why I keep, you know, asking that question, if the CARES money will reimburse the lost revenue, because that is exactly where we would, you know, where we need it for, but and the park commissioners are, you know, they're on top of this too, and it's it's hard for for all of us, so, but that's where, you know, they're they're working with us.
Okay, anybody got any questions on that one?
I'm just curious, and this might be unrelated, but, well, I guess it's related, but with, so PPP doesn't cover government entities or enterprise funds or anything like that, the PPP loans?
Uh, no.
Okay.
Yep.
They they cover the supplies, George, but they don't cover revenues.
Right. Right.
All right, got it, thank you.
Okay, so the the last article has to do with putting $50,000 into the town's other post-employment benefits trust fund, which is called OPEB. I know that it may not be what we'd like to see, but at least we will continue to put some money, you know, into that fund, so we're proposing $50,000. Any questions?
No. I would just point out to the new members in particular that to date, the town has set aside, including investment earnings on the the fund, over 1.5 million. The liability, I don't have the current, a year ago, the liability was projected by an actuary to be just over $21 million for post-employment benefits. So, you know, like Rich said, we're not putting as much aside as we'd like to, but we'll continue to pursue this, and the longer term plan, I think that we have, although we haven't formalized it, will be that when our pension liability is fully funded, then we'll shift those budget monies over to to more aggressively start to deal with the post-employment healthcare costs.
Okay. So George will probably have a warrant review meeting. Trying to think of the dates off the top of my head, but is that the 16th?
Yeah, well, we'll we'll set another meeting aside.
Yeah, we'll let you know, yeah, so I'm pretty sure it's going to be the 16th, George.
Okay.
To let you know, so we'll notify you, but now that you have all the background, you know, on the on what we're proposing, so.
Perfect, so team just kind of saved the date for us for the 16th, and we'll get we'll get that out as soon as we possibly can.
Okay. We tried to cover a lot of stuff here, and I know that, you know, we need to do, you know, more of this. And actually, Todd, I think, has made a recommendation, which I think is a good idea, that on a quarterly basis, you know, we get together and talk about, you know, where we are and the budgets and problems that we have and things we need to fix and so forth and so on, so we'll try to do that on a regular basis. And budget season will be upon us shortly.
Yeah, I agree, I think meeting regularly, whether it's quarterly or every couple of months will will help kind of keep everyone involved in the process as opposed to meeting, you know, a couple of times a year, so.
Yeah, I think your point is well-taken, that, you know, if if you look at the general bylaws, you know, the Finance Committee is supposed to be really involved, you know, in the whole budget process and make recommendations and challenge things that we're doing and so forth and so on, and I think that the town in the past, you know, have broken down on that, and I think that that's one of the reasons why I invited Todd, you know, to this meeting, because I want you guys to have, just as just as we do, access to Todd, so you can go in and, you know, talk to him or call him up or whatever and say, hey, what does this number mean? And we'll also, Todd, make sure that they get copies of the monthly expense versus budgeted reports, okay? We'll also make sure they get copies of the the revenues projections versus the actual projections on a monthly basis. And we can do that electronically, we can also mail them to you if we have to, so November's about to end this weekend, right?
Yeah.
Over.
October.
Thank you. So we'll do that for the month as soon as he has them available next week. And then you'll have the detailed items, everything in that budget, along with what's being spent and you know, the comparisons and so forth, so is that okay with you guys?
Yeah, sounds great.
I think it would be helpful.
Okay, Dan.
But I like that idea as well, and I was chatting with Todd earlier today, and maybe as we go down the road and see how that starts working out, if we can turn around and take those reports and publish them on the website too, so that residents have those, so that when they walk into town meeting, you know, it's not, they get the, they normally get the the big Excel book with 8,000 lines and have 30 minutes to figure it out. So they'll have a little more information ahead of that to see how things have been going in the month.
Todd doesn't want 8,000 questions either.
Well, we'll limit it to 7,000.
All right, well, we appreciate your time, and hopefully this was helpful, and we'll probably get back together maybe late December or early part of January, and then we'll start our usual process, we hope.
Thank you so much, really appreciate it, and guys, thank you all for joining, I will call a vote, so it is 8:06, I'd like to make a motion to close out the meeting.
A second.
Thank you, all those.
Hi. Hi. Okay, all right, thank you, thank you so much, have a great night.
You too. Thank you.
Stay safe.
Everybody, have a great night.
Take care. Okay. We have a new business item, board members on the agenda that we unfortunately have one of our, or the animal control officer is out on a medical leave. We also have another assistant animal control officer out because of maternity leave. And so we're down to only two, you know, people, you know, at this point, and so what we need to do, we have coverage during the week, but we don't have coverage during the weekends right now, so what we'd like to try to do is is appoint a temporary, hire a temporary emergency animal control assistant officer that would fill in until the full-time animal control officer is filled, and then maybe at a later date, once everybody gets back to work, we still have an existing position that's open, that an animal, assistant animal control officer that left because he had to take another position in the town. So I will entertain a motion to appoint I'm sorry, I don't have, his name isn't on here. What's his name, is anybody?
Oh, Ronnie?
Freitz, who's the?
Was it Ronnie Freitz we're looking at?
Yes, I believe so. So I'm saying a motion to appoint Ronnie Freitz as a temporary emergency assistant control officer until the animal control officer returns.
Should we should we include any stipulations about the the normal onboarding stuff, so Cory check, driving record, all that, all the the normal stuff, would that be included?
That'll happen automatically, Brian.
All right.
Tell me, you want to make that motion? I say.
I was looking at.
I just say move that motion.
You're muted, Leah.
There we go, I didn't know if I had to say the whole thing over again. Okay, so make a motion to appoint Ronnie Freitz to the temporary emergency assistant ACO position.
Until the animal control officer returns.
Yes, until the animal control officer returns.
That is normal, normal schedule.
Yeah.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
EB and I.
Day, I.
The camera, I. Okay, is there any new business that the board wants to bring up this evening? Okay, so entertain a motion to adjourn.
Brian, you all set?
Uh, yeah, I believe so. I was just looking at my checklist here.
Yep, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second motion?
All those in favor?
EB and I.
Day, I.
The camera, I. Okay. Thank you very much.